Open up our May nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen work session. If you please silence or shut off your cell phones, we'd appreciate it. And join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Denise, any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I have no changes.
Mr. Nash, any changes?
Nope.
All right. At that time, it's nine o'clock. At this time, it's nine o'clock. We'll open up the public hearing on the truancy ordinance number one oh eight. So at nine o'clock, that hearing is open. And at this time, give a, Mr. Nash, wants to give any kind of overview of the truancy ordinance at all? I sort of hit you cold there, Mr. Nash.
Sure.
I'm prepared. I believe you are prepared. And thank you, guys, for showing up today.
No problem. As we said last time, this ordinance is based on similar ordinances of Clanton, Jackson, Kennedy's. It does a couple of things in my mind. First off, it, for the older students who are having attendance problems, it puts the responsibility on those students rather than just only on the parent. The current statute is pretty limited in terms of only putting the responsibility on the parent. And oftentimes, that just, it's not enough with high school age students. The second thing that this does is that it allows us to appoint truancy officers at each local school. And as I think I probably did a poor job last time in explaining that, what that does is it means that really a lot sooner in the process, the school can write the state required truancy letter to get the ball rolling. What generally happens right now is that the schools go through a lot of steps. Steve and Jessica explained to you what they do in terms of meetings with parents, conferences, putting students on contracts. Then if those things fail, then I get called in. But I, by state law, then I have to send a letter. There has to be another conference. And so we repeat several of the steps again. By virtue of this ordinance, what happens is we can have truancy officers writing citations at the schools. And they can do that right, right as part of their steps, working with kids and families. And so that will move the process along, speed things up probably by two or three weeks. And, you know, it's two or three. If kids already have attendance problems, they miss additional two or three weeks, it just really makes a situation the kid's not going to do well at the school. So those are really the two major advantages to this ordinance.
So streamlined and accountable.
And so the hearing process is at this time, we'll take anyone but from the public. There will be two hearings. We'll have a hearing today. We'll close, I'll close a little bit later today. You don't have to stay for the whole thing. And then we'll have another hearing on June the third, I believe, in Port Rock. And after that, then the commissioner will make a decision to enact the ordinance or not, which it becomes local laws. Thank you. So is there any public that wants to make a comment at this time on the hearing? I'm going to leave it open for a while, guys. You'd stick around for the rest of the meeting if you want, or you just go back to work. I don't.
That choice.
Thank you for coming.
I'll stick around.
Yeah, thank you for coming. I didn't, what kind of people, how many people show up or not, that way.
Dave Kerr and I will be there on the third, Port Rock.
Yes, I will be. I apologize for my lateness this morning. I was at another meeting out of the prison. So I apologize.
So noted.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
Have a good day.
As I stated earlier, the hearing opened. Please help me remind me to close that hearing at some point. And we're going to move right on down the agenda. Andrea, are you here for something on the agenda? You're just there. All right. We'll just move down our agenda. Dave, Tom, you're up.
Perfect timing, huh?
We'll go right, because I know Tom is pretty busy. We'll go right, let's get down to the runway rehab project award recommendation. We have that in our packet. And Jessica, everybody here today are meeting tomorrow, but canceled. So we are, these are action items that we'll be acting on today or not. If you can run a thread for us. So you guys have a recommendation on the runway. This was a connect Oregon project along with FAA dollars. Quite a huge project, so give us a quick overview of what we need to do.
I don't think I've ever heard about this.
Well, you've been late on for a month and a half.
Well, I started at the beginning.
This is just a good thing, if you just give a fast overview of what this really means. And then we'll look at the cost and give them the order.
We finally got our final bids back from the four different contractors that we had bid on the project. And the highest bid was Rocky Mountain Construction, three million, four hundred and ninety thousand. And then our lowest bid, which is what we're recommending, was Night River, two million, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents. This has all gone through WH Pacific, and they've reviewed all of the packets to make sure that there was no error in numbers or the work process. And they approved that. So David and I are recommending that we go with Night River and get the ball rolling. As soon as we get this approval, we can send this to the FAA and they can do the final approval on giving the whole project up and running by June first, the project, hopefully.
So the maximum, we finally get them cornered on that, is thirty-seven, three eighty-eight. That's the maximum.
That's our max, yeah.
It could be less than that.
Yeah, right.
If we take action today, we'll be allowing for up to thirty-seven, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Correct.
That matched to leverage the two point nine.
Right. So the county's percentage is actually only one percent of the whole project, the three point six million dollar project. We're having to come up with about one percent. So it's a pretty good percentage.
Yeah, it is.
One point zero one.
Yeah.
I do read them cases.
So I'm going to make a motion that we award, that we approve the recommendation that we received on seventeen dash thirty-five runway rehab project between Night River as presented to us.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the recommendation to award the bid in the amount of two million, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents to Night River. And that was recommended also by WH Pacific and by Dave and Tom, that manage their vote. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Did you end up, before you two leave, didn't you have a meeting last week or this week with the agencies?
Yeah, last week.
Okay. And that went?
It went well. It was more of a, kind of a general get together meeting to figure out where everybody was at as far as communication and finding out what our thoughts were as a county with the, whether or not we had thoughts of moving their facility there was a big thing. They wanted to find out before they started putting any more into it, whether or not we were looking at moving them or, you know, saying, no, we can't do this anymore. And we reassured them that that wasn't the case, you know. They are where they're at as far as we're concerned.
I know with this, it kind of tied to this project, the rumors that were out there about the use and availability and all that stuff. So good.
Yeah. And I did tell them that I'm going to look into our pavement management project with the state and the feds is showing in two thousand and nineteen that will repave in front of their area there for the bombers. They were requesting cement rather than pavement because of the, you know, because of the weight of the aircraft. In fact, a retardant can be washed off easier, so.
And also the retardant breaks the asphalt pavement after a while. Well, on those hot days, as Commissioner Winters was suggesting, yeah, I'm returning on that. It spins it up.
Yeah. And so I'm going to, I'm going to talk with the FAA and see if we can get justification because that money's already been allotted for that. We'll see if we can get justification for the cement because the value's probably going to be more for the project. But I did tell them that, you know, anything above what the FAA will approve is going to have to be, you know, taken care of from their side. So if we end up with an extra hundred thousand dollars or whatever in cost, they would have to incur that cost in order to put the cement in that section.
Good.
That's kind of where we're sitting with that. And then we got the water situation handled, it sounds like. So we're going to cap off the water going to the private hangars from their wells so that they don't have to worry about any liability there with those hangars.
Great.
Move.
Yep. There you go. Moving ahead.
I think we're just, yeah, chadewam. Just keep digging holes, huh?
She wants to dig out of something.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, save the film material. We want to fill some.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
So Dave, while you're here, let's go to request for access to property Delbert Caswell. And you put this on the agenda. This has been talked about back and forth for several months from Commissioner, Commissioner to Delbert itself. What we have is access to a piece of property. Of course, he has an easement across railroad operations now. He's looking at giving up that access across railroad property. And we give or grant or sell a section of another part of county property to access and eliminate that, which causes some interference apparently. So I guess I probably should let you say that's all.
Well, Delbert just proposed, he brought in a proposal that, you know, he would give up all rights for the right of way of crossing the road to get to his property if we would grant or sell or whatever, a twenty, or thirty by, two hundred and fifty, yeah, thirty foot by two hundred and fifty foot, it's kind of smart county land, where he'd be responsible for all costs to do that survey and fencing and whatever it takes to get it done. He'd be responsible for all costs. So he does give up that right because his right of way is right in the middle of our busiest part of the depot down there. Right. Change and things go on, so.
So when we talked about this last week, I think, or the week before, we were going to follow the same format if we were to approve this as we did with his property.
Well, if we did that, it's a little bit different of an agreement because this is an easement that we gave the other person down by on the other end. This would be actually given the land.
This would be actual property.
This is not actual property. We did an easement for Frank or whoever it was.
Roger.
Roger. And this is an actual land swap, or not swap, but where we give the land.
So it's kind of the same, but it won't be the same type of agreement?
Well, the, yeah, it's quite a bit different than easement where it'd be actual property and change hands and it'd be ownership. And one reason, and I'm glad I just supported going that way, is because of the uniqueness of coming off of the city road there, access off of the city road and the maintenance of an easement. I didn't want the county to incur those struggles. All that would be done by the person that would own this piece of property. They'd have to cut the curb, make the approach. They'd have to have a survey. They'd have to, it'd be theirs totally. The county would not incur the headaches or the cost of access right there off of, I think it's Third Street.
Would it be more like what we did with the school district, actually? Well, maybe my question wasn't phrased quite right. And the legal counsel is thinking this is a good thing.
Yes, yes.
Just that we closed that.
Before we wrote up agreement, we just need to get approved and get the facts straight. What direction you guys want me to head to take care of, and then we can work on an agreement?
So what you need out of us today, and I believe we can do it by consensus, is give you a direction to go forward with this as a land purchased by Mr. Caswell with him occurring all cost title survey and fencing and relinquishing all rights to the other property. Consensus on that? Make it happen, Dave.
Okay.
Thank you. When you get it all together, then we will approve it. Legal counsel will help you on the final contract or other reasons.
Okay. You know, we talked.
If you need help with legal counsel getting that together, talk to either one of us and we'll help you in the direction. All right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
That's all we got for you. All right. I'm trying to get things, yeah. Charlie, if they're available, Denise. While she's doing that, I guess I could, we could talk a little bit. We received a letter from correspondence from Clonan County on, they've actually done a resolution. This is about wolves in Oregon and asking for them to be taken off the listing. And they want them to be delisted. And I thought that something that us as a board ought to consider looking at. I know that I've been, talked with Brady Murphy several times over several years in terms of wolves coming into Lake County, and there is documentation now of wolves here. So Clonan County done a resolution. I didn't know that we need to do a resolution, but I thought we'd consider doing a letter asking for delisting. So I'm going to bring it up here for you. You support doing a letter?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll have Denise put together a letter supporting delisting of wolves in Fill the time, I can do a little bit of liaison update right now. Last week, I met with Connie Cummings, Forest Supervisor, and others, Amanda Warren Thorpe on the roadside of it, Dave Brilliant, and Eric Woodward. And we had a good meeting on the travel management, my struggles and our struggles with the way that the travel management was done in Fremont, Wayneville Forest. Connie was very receptive of that. There's things that could be changed and need to be changed. We had a good visit. We sort of came to the theory is we can't change what happened, which we all know, Congressman Walden's working on that. In the meantime, maybe for the amendments that we could make it a little easier for the public to do amendments. Nothing was decided, but they're looking at maybe being able to set up where there could be maps and the forms for doing amendments, the ranger stations at the SO or wherever they needed. Public could come in, look at the map, have some help, and do the amendments for the roads that I've opened. Our folks, I mean, it works both ways. And so I was very, very pleased with the response and the reception that both ways, both parties working with it. Forest Service was very positive on that. I have, yesterday afternoon, I did receive a call. I've been gone on medical yesterday afternoon. Riley Bush, Congressman Walden's office, he had also met with Connie Cummings on the travel management, and he wants to talk to me and find out if they can support to do this. Very positive, very positive meeting. So that's one of my liaisons. I filled enough time and I have Charlie here. Charlie, sorry. Charlie, you're here for Veteran Service Organizational Structure.
Right.
Here in our budget time, there was some proposals within the budget that we gave you a direction that before we can go any which way as far as personnel changes, whatever, you need to come forward to board for approval. So here you are today.
Okay. Sorry about that. I thought I was at eleven, so.
Well, we're, it wasn't timed. I'm just trying to fill in. We got some other things.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, as you know, I was working on the reorganization. I've talked to each and every one of you about my plan, and it sounded very positive from each one of you. And just to go back, I had to grab everything real quick. The main focus was to create a sharper focus on customer service, and that's the ultimate goal. And in the future, to try to get an office specialist, which will be very good. Today was a perfect example where they could do the clerical work or I can work for veterans itself and work with claims. So was there any questions that you thought after I've talked to each and every one of you?
Well, I guess not really, Charlie. We need to make sure that we approve the direction that you've been working with your liaison with Commissioner Kessler on the reorganization of this department. And your recommendation is to reorganize. And you're going to take care of the outreach, and you're going to take care of things in Christmas Valley.
Absolutely.
And this reorganization will be a layoff that's associated with this. Just we need to approve the whole thing. And just wanted to make sure that we've done it in a board meeting, once it impacts employees, either hiring or layoffs. The recommendation comes from you. Talk to each one of us individually. Your liaison supports it, so it's the formality today. I believe most of them.
Okay.
Well, a little on the formality. Speaking of sharper focus, when we've talked, I'm still a little uncertain as to what your plan really is related to the office specialist in that we've discussed it. Correct me if I'm wrong, you thought for this next year, you would see if you couldn't get everything in order and then consider whether or not you were going to need that. You were going to evaluate this new organization or this new way of providing service to.
Right. It's kind of like process elimination. See, I've already, in the last two years, I've already set up all the filing system properly by the regulations. So as of right now, I can handle the office without office specialists. But I see in the future that this could happen. And I would like to see this happen. And, I mean, as you know, just having an office specialist yourself, that, you know, it's, the main thing is to focus on veterans eligibility benefits and not support clerical functions for the assigned department. And this would be including answering phones, directing phone calls, taking messages, and serve as receptionists, greeting the public with general information regarding veterans' benefits.
Well, Charlie, I'm sorry for interrupting. You really don't need to, for me, to justify it.
Okay.
I just want some understanding that if we're not going to go there right now, that if you think in the future you need to go there, that we kind of have a check back on that.
Oh, okay.
Because I think what we'd be approving today is you taking over the whole county operation.
Absolutely. As of right now, that's what I'm doing.
Okay.
And I have numbers to prove it, your numbers, but that's how it's going to be right now is I will be taking over the whole operation myself.
Yeah. And that's what I thought in confirming our discussions. In the future, you won't have something else you need, but right now, that's how you're going to.
That's how it's going to work right now.
Yeah, okay.
So entertain a motion. Why can you make a motion? I'll make a motion to support the reorganization proposal that Charlie has brought forward.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Charlie. Very much appreciated.
See you, Charlie. Come back today. You too.
Okay. Is Ann coming right up?
Central, no, I can message.
You got a chance for you in eighty minutes?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I have a mindset on my desk. I have both meetings.
Yeah. Denise, sign up for the dates.
Fifth and sixth.
Fifth and sixth.
Correct.
Make a motion that we approve. That's fifth and sixth.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to improvement as the fifth and sixth. May it be presented? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Until in a minute.
Okay.
I've got a taco, a full board meeting next week, and say on my open. We finally got it scheduled because we've talked about on numerous occasions, our workforce organization restructuring is moving and attracts a ten county organization that we are part of now, the central organization, east, I think it's the east slope of the Cascades. The name's changed a time or two, but I've brought to fellow board members attention on numerous occasions, and that's what's precipitated this meeting, that when the new organizations across the state go into place for workforce assistance and training and everything else that those service providers do, that the old twenty-four member county organization can't just go away. We've got a lot of reporting and fiscal responsibilities. And so out of this meeting, hopefully, we come a clear vision of how we're going to take that on, and we're not just all going to go our separate ways July one and think that we're finished with our federal reporting requirements and everything else. So a lot of work yet to do.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there is.
Okay. There's still five minutes before we bring in Mr. Adams on the water contract.
Oh, I just had one comment, commissioners. The work that's being done out around the memorial out front in Safeway and in some of the local eating establishments, the community's talking about it. And there was a lot of talk on are they going to pave it, are they going to asphalt it, what are they doing? I just kept my mouth shut and said, just watch. The work that's being done is being noticed, and it's phenomenal, the work. There's conversations in the community about the courthouse, the looks of the courthouse, the windows, made a huge improvement, the paint added to it, and the work that's being done to the grass as well as the memorial. People in the community are talking about it, and there's a lot of excitement about that.
Well, Jake, I'm really glad you said that, and I think that it's appropriate to say. And I think Commissioner Winters would agree. Really do appreciate that. James, the work he's done on the rock work is phenomenal. We had a contractor, local contractor, that's done the paving stones and so forth. But I want to give credit where credit's due on so much of what's going on around here. And there's many people that are involved in it, our maintenance workers and so forth. But Dave Vermaat, things that have been in neutral, he has accelerated into, you know, things getting done. So that's, I appreciate you bringing that up because he's working really hard on this stuff.
In the last two and a half years, this building, these grounds, this building has become a different building inside and out, the morale. People, I enjoy coming to work. The building is nice, it's clean, it's professional.
Lyle Arons from KOTI has filmed footage that they used even last night in a report about Lake County of the old courthouse. And I'm going to give him a jingle and say, send your camera over if nothing else, we want to take some new photographs of the things that you're going to use on the news reports. Because it is, it's absolutely, completely different.
It's a different place.
And like I said, Dave has had a lot of assistance. You know, we've had contract work, we've had force account work, we've had, you know, a lot of people involved. But if it wasn't for his leadership, getting out in front and taking the initiative, this Veterans Memorial, when we first came into office as a full board, we talked about that and talked about how to move forward. And we've, you know, had different entities that have looked at it. But about six months ago, we had a little discussion, and Dave got the green light to move, and he's moved. And it's really coming together.
Thank you. All right. John, we're going to do, have Ann come up really fast and get that out of the way before we have to talk. So.
Sorry, John.
Ann, I'm trying to get our agenda.
Sounds good.
Rocked it through because I've got some other things to do today, so. So we have our contract with Oster Professional Group. You want to give a quick overview?
Yeah, so this is the standard, two documents that they use to get the audit season started. The first is the engagement letter that spells out, you know, what they do, what we're responsible for doing. You know, kind of gives the ins and outs of who does what. I think it probably goes into comments there on the engagement letter that they don't look at every single transaction. And then they look at what our policies are and make sure that we're following our policies, but they don't make a lot of comments on our policies. So that's the engagement letter. The second document is the contract. So this is for the audit that will start with the fiscal year ending June 30, 2015.
And so we have two different motions, Commissioner. One for the engagement letter.
I'll make a motion that we approve as presented the engagement letter with Oster Professional Group.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the engagement letter as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the audit contract for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2015 as presented with Oster Professional Group.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the contract with Oster Professional. Fiscal impact, $27,122. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Adam.
We're actually nice guys today.
Yeah.
It's nice when you're talking about audits. Do they notice?
Yeah.
Mr. Adams, sir, you're the next, right on time, 9:30. Look at that. Yeah, she'll have a couple of them to sign. So, Mr. Adams, you're here on the CHIP program, which is the Community Health Improvement Partnership. Community Health Improvement Partnership, correct?
Yes.
Welcome, John.
Thanks for having me. So you guys stole my introduction. I'm John Adams. I'm with the CHIP program, the Community Health Improvement Partnership. And I've come out here the past couple of years and presented about the CHIP program. And so I wanted to come back again this year and just give you guys an update on what we've been up to. As you may know, the CHIP program consists of about 20 to 25 people from throughout the whole county, folks representing all parts of our communities. The goal of the program is to improve the overall health of county residents. We've spent a good part of the past couple of years identifying what the top health priorities are for Lake County and creating some strategies to improve community health in those priority areas. And I'm glad to report that we've been able, over the course of the past year, we've been able to do more than just planning, and we've been able to implement some of our strategies and our programs. So I'm hoping that as I'm checking in with you guys, that maybe you're familiar with some of the programs, such as the school-based oral health program, or the physical activity scholarship program, or the senior navigator program. So these programs and other programs that are part of our Community Health Improvement Plan are now available to the community, and they're beginning to make an impact. So I wanted to come out here today and to share with you the programs that we have, that we've initiated, and then also to share with you some new programs that we've created and that are on the way, and then to talk briefly about an upcoming community meeting. So just as a reminder, so we collected community health data, both quantitative and qualitative community health data. So I presented this on this previously, but just kind of as a review, these are the quantitative data sets that we looked at, demographics, health status, health utilization, provider supply and demand, and a number of specific health metrics that we're required to look at by the Eastern Oregon Coordinated Care Organization. We also looked at qualitative community health data through the results of a community health survey and from community meetings that we organized in Lakeview and in Christmas Valley in both 2013 and 2014. So through, through all of the results from the qualitative data and the quantitative data, we're able to identify four health priorities for Lake County. Those are oral health, mental health, physical activity, and senior services. And we spent, we spent several weeks developing new strategies aimed at improving community health within those four areas. So I'd like to share with you some of the initial programs that our folks created and some of the early results. So I've provided you guys with copies of our three-year strategic plan for your use and your reference. Within the handouts I gave, so this form here kind of outlines some of the, on the right-hand side, the outcomes and impact summary outlines some of the, some of our results. And I'll be kind of walking through those. So first, in terms of oral health, so one of our strategies is to conduct oral health education, promotion, and outreach. Essentially, we wanted to get more information out there to the community, help educate the community about the importance of oral health. And so this handout right here is the handout that we've created to get out to the, to the community and to help educate folks. And there's a number of messages on here that we really are trying to kind of lift up and get out there in the community, such as, did you know that cavities are contagious? They're the number-one infectious disease in Oregon, and they are 100% preventable. So 73% of Lake County children, six to nine years old, experience cavities, and that's at a rate that's 21% higher than the rest of the state, so that's significantly higher. Cavities can result in pain and developmental problems, including overall health, nutrition, and ability to learn. About 16,000 school hours are lost each year due to dental pain and dental visits in the state of Oregon. 5.4% of our eighth graders missed one or more school hours in a recent 12-month period, which is significantly higher than the rest of the state. Lake County is also a dental provider shortage areas. And for all of these reasons, we've prioritized oral health and really want to, we want to get oral health preventive, preventive information out there to the community. So when we did our initial assessment, we, there was really not a ton of oral health information related to adults. And so we need, we wanted to do a little bit, to get a little bit more information. And so one of the strategies is conducting that adult oral health assessment. So we sent out 500 oral health surveys in the mail to a random sampling of the population. We've received back 93, and we have an initial report based on responses from, from that survey, from the survey responses. And our oral health subcommittee is reviewing those and making recommendations on possibly new programs that we might, or new strategies that we might want to pursue. And then finally, so one of the strategies is providing free dental screenings in fluoride varnish with children in grades kindergarten through sixth grade. So this year, on February 25, we partnered with Advantage Dental, who provided two dental hygienists. We partnered with OIT, the OIT Dental Program, which provided 12 dental students. And we worked with all of the Lake County schools. And on February 25, we were able to provide the free dental screenings, fluoride varnish, one-on-one oral hygiene instruction with the kids, and classroom presentations. And the results are that we were able to, so of the 515 kids in grades K through sixth, we were able to screen 209 of them, fluoride varnish 195, and provide the one-on-one instruction with 148 of the kids. And then, as I mentioned, also to provide classroom education with a number of the classrooms. So our assessment of how that went is that I think overall, all of the partners were pleased. I think we have a strong collaboration with Advantage Dental, with OIT, with the schools working together. I think there is a consensus that we can, we can improve on those numbers. So this is the first time this program has been provided in the schools in a number of years, since at least 2008. And that's just because that's as far as the records go back. And so we're looking forward to providing this again next year, and we think we can improve on those numbers.
So, John, two questions. So serving 515 kids, you got consent forms back from 67%. So is there a reason that you know of, not to say that it should have been 100%, but that you didn't get 100%? And then, secondly, from the 344, there's a variety of different numbers on things that were allowed to be done or that were done with those students?
Yeah, so in terms of the numbers, I think that you're always going to get a percentage of folks that, for whatever reason, they're, you know, they have different values, or so they're just not going to be interested. Or their kids already, you know, they have regular dental visits, and they don't need the program. And so they'll, you know, they'll indicate that they're not interested in the program. We actually, the intention of this program is that we provide it to, we provide the screenings to, our goal is to get 85% of the kids. And so we're hoping that we, that the dental screenings are provided to every child unless the parent opts out. We had a missed opportunity this year, and what ended up happening is instead of providing the screenings to every child unless the parent indicated to opt out, we ended up only screening the kids who, whose parents signed any parent consent form at all. And so that was definitely, it was miscommunication. And so that's an area that we think that moving forward next year, we can easily, it's going to be an easy correction to be able to get that number up. In terms of the screening, in terms of just getting more consent forms overall, so typically what Advantage, so Advantage Dental is kind of the, you know, our partner expert who's provided this program throughout the state. And what they recommend is getting the best percentages is by working with the schools and doing it at school registration. If you can, if you can include it with the school packet at school registration and actually ask parents to sign it as they come in to register their child, that's when you get really, really great percentages. We actually tried that last year, and unfortunately, the teachers and the staff who were involved in working with parents didn't have a lot of information about this program. And so they didn't feel very confident about, you know, trying to get parents to sign it, to sign the forms. And so we actually had pretty low percentages during school registration. So we had to go back a couple times to the parents and advertise about it and do other things to get, to get those numbers up. So next year, we're working more closely with the staff and the teachers. And so there's a, there'll be an all-county in-service day before school registration, and we'll be presenting at that in-service day to make sure that all the teachers and staff are on board and they'll be prepared to help us get kids registered. So moving on, so mental health, one of the strategies, implementing the Mental Health First Aid Program. So the Lake County Mental Health is the lead in this strategy. And it's essentially a strategy to educate the community about mental health disorders and other substance abuse disorders. And getting the community involved to connect individuals who may be experiencing signs of mental illness or substance use disorders, and connecting them to the appropriate care, such as Lake County Mental Health. The goal of the program is to train 350 individuals. And the initial kind of target folks that we're trying to train are kind of gatekeepers within the community, so such as teachers, EMS, nurses, et cetera. And so Lake County Mental Health has trained their staff in this program. They've provided several trainings. I've actually requested to get the latest numbers, and I just haven't heard back yet. But I know that they've provided several trainings. In terms of integrating mental health providers within primary care clinics, we've submitted a proposal to be able to provide this strategy, and we weren't funded. So that's something that we'll have to continue to work on obtaining funding for. Physical activity, so similar to oral health, we want to promote physical activity and help, help provide health education and outreach to the community. So this is the handout that we've put together, and we're working to get out there to the community. There's a number of messages that we're trying to get out promoting physical activity. On the back of this is a listing of all of the physical activity programs and services available within the county. We update this regularly, and we also created a webpage. So it's linked through lakehealthdistrict.org, and it's called, it's the Healthy Outback webpage. So folks can go on that webpage and find all of this information, the listing to all the physical activity programs and services. And then we like to keep an updated calendar of physical activity-related events on that webpage as well. So the physical activity incentive program or scholarship program, this program targets low-income individuals who have risk factors for heart disease. What this program does is it essentially covers the monthly fees for folks to be able to go to the gym or Zumba or Pilates or yoga, et cetera. We simply ask that folks who participate in the program that they go a minimum number of times each month to be able to continue within the program on a month-to-month basis. So currently, we have 54 people who are participating in the program. And we're hoping that, you know, these folks are newly, newly physically active folks and that we're increasing their, their physical activity levels. The way that we're going to measure success in this program is we ask everyone who participates in the program to do a self-assessment at the beginning, and then we'll ask them to do a self-assessment at the end of the program. So when the, when the, when the funding runs out, essentially, we'll be able to know the full impact of this program and whether it was effective. One of the strategies is establishing a Parks and Rec program under nonprofit organization. So we've been working with Ann and the county to help secure the funding and to help initiate and lead that program. So as you know, we've been working with the UVO consultants, and I believe we have, based on the results from the task team meetings and the community meetings and the workshops and the surveys, that they've come out with some initial goals, findings, and recommendations. And they've, they've had a community meeting to kind of share those with the community. And, and I believe that the master plan, the goal is the master plan to be complete by August. And then finally, for senior health, so the senior navigator program is the main strategy for, for the CHIP, the Community Health Improvement Plan. And essentially, this program, it supports seniors in their health goals and needs and helping to connect them to needed programs and services. And we're looking at making an impact in five main areas. And that's nutrition, transportation, home care, physical activity, and mental, mental health and kind of social activity. So we've, we've been able to work with the senior center and secure funding for that. They've been able to bring on Ann Casbaum as the senior navigator. She's been trained and has started the home visits. And it's a little early for us to report on the numbers, but we're really excited about this program. What's really interesting about this program is that it's one of the first, first-known programs to apply the navigator model, which is becoming more and more popular in the, in the health system and applying it exclusively to the senior population. health system and applying it exclusively to the senior population. So, in 2013, our folks created these strategies. We worked on implementing them last year, and last year, our folks felt like there was more that we could be doing as well, and so they created a number of new strategies. And all of these are included in the three-year strategic plan there. So, I'll just quickly share some of the new strategies that they came up with. So, they would like to, for oral health, they'd like to expand the school-based program to include dental ceilings. So, initially, dental ceilings was something that we wanted to provide, but we weren't able to do it because we didn't have the equipment to be able to do it at the schools. We received a grant from the Oregon Community Foundation, a $50,000 grant, that helps us to purchase this equipment and to provide this program in the schools to be able to do the dental ceilings. And we're going to expand it to include seventh and eighth graders. So, we'll be doing kindergarten through eighth grade, providing the dental screenings, fluoride varnish, and the dental ceilings over the next two years.
Are the providers on board with you? I know that we don't have enough dentists here, but are they on board? Is this what they do in their business also, or is this duplicating what the private sector does?
I think that, you know, that's a good question. I know that Advantage Dental does, they use fluoride as a preventative practice when they do one-on-one within the clinics. You can do fluoride multiple times throughout the year, so even if folks are getting it, you know, at their, at their provider, it doesn't hurt to do it again as well. But, you know, we had approached Saban about participating in this program, and he was just too busy, spread too thin, and so I'm not really familiar with his practices. So, the first tooth program, again, this is providing the dental screenings and the fluoride varnish to preschool-aged children. So, Lake County Public Health is taking the lead on this program, and so they'll be providing this program to Head Start, to the daycare centers. North Lake School has a new, or will have a new preschool coming online. And she's also working with Warner Mountain Medical Clinic to do dental days where they'll work with the kids that come in that day and provide the screenings and the varnish. And then, the final strategy is organizing dental days for the uninsured and those that are covered, but who have not received any service in the past few years. And so, this strategy is really trying to give more, provide more access to folks who are not covered by any insurance. So, we'd like to be able to partner with Advantage Dental and have, do events either at the hospital or at the clinic here, where they offer free to low-cost services to folks that are uninsured. And then, we'd also like to offer kind of similar free-to-low-cost services to folks who are covered but haven't come in in the last couple of years, because we'd like to provoke, promote preventative practices instead of folks coming in only when they have, you know, a crisis or a big problem. The new mental health strategies, so because we are a mental health provider shortage area, we'd like to increase the providers, and it's a real struggle recruiting to rural areas. So, one of the things we'd like to do is to partner with university graduate programs to connect students to employment opportunities here. And then, another strategy is to recruit a psychiatric mental health nurse. Lake Health District is currently active recruiting for that position.
So, why are we considered a mental health provider shortage area?
Based on, based on, there's a formula that, based on population, how many, how many providers that you should have given, given that population, and we're under, we're under what we should be at. And it factors both kind of traditional mental, mental health providers, and then psychiatric mental health would be another level that they would look at, and we have zero for the counting, so we're certainly short in that area. New physical activity strategies, promoting trail and walking and biking routes with signage, kiosks, and mats, creating physical activity program for children in grades K through six in winter months. One of the things that's been talked about is providing recreational basketball for K through three, K through third grade. And then, finally, looking for some programs for, physical activity programs for preschool-aged children. So, every year, we've organized a community meeting to kind of work with the community about, within this program, to give folks an opportunity to be involved in the process and in the program. And so, we'll be doing the same thing again, oh, I'm sorry, I missed, I missed one here. So, before I go to that, for senior health, we have some additional strategies. So, we'd like to provide cardio programs, some more cardio programs. Right now, we have the Strong People Program that's provided through the senior center and the OSU Extension Office, and that really focuses on kind of muscle strengthening and balance. So, we're looking for more cardio types of programs, such as Zumba or something like We'd also like to get folks who are non-seniors more involved to support the senior community and the senior center, and we'd like to create a Friends of the Lake County Seniors Organization, similar to the Friends of the Lake County Libraries, where they help to fundraise for the libraries and can volunteer their time for different events and programs. And then, finally, we'll be looking to impact the colon cancer screening rates within the county. We're actually, our screening rates are low in this county. We've already received the funding for our project to be able to do that. So, the community meeting I mentioned is going to be held on Thursday, June 18th. We're actually going to be doing it again in Christmas Valley and in Lakeview. So, this is the information for the Lakeview meeting, June 18th. Folks can come and learn about the CHIP program, look, learn about the full three-year strategic plan, learn about what we've done so far and the impact, early impacts that we're having. And then, we'd like to continue to engage the community about how we can do a better job of providing these programs and getting the community connected to these programs. So, we wanted to invite you guys out to come out and join us for that meeting.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
That's all you have.
Yep.
Thanks, John. Great overview of a lot of work that's been going on.
Really encourage you on the senior side, that we have quite a population of seniors. Yeah, I'm getting there, I'm getting there almost. I just learned it earlier than you. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
And it's two minutes to 10, we'll take recess.
Perfect. Can I use your computer to print out?
Whenever we come back, we'll be going into executive session.
Did you want to throw it to me before we go into recess?
Okay. Before we do go into recess, thank you very much. I'll ask one more time if there are any comments on the ordinance 208 hearing that's open. There'd be an ongoing closed hearing on the path. One minute to 10, and continue the hearing June 3rd. Thank you. Now, we'll go into recess for about a half hour after roughly.
Just a quick question on the ordinance process. We will have another open public comment, Christmas Valley, or Footloose, excuse me, June 3rd, and then, what's the process after that?
Either.
Will the ordinance be adopted or not?
Yeah, one way or the other.
And then, by how the verbiage goes, it's going to work. It depends on the fact.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.